So I'm going to call the board today's town council council. It is 10:00 AM on May 21st. And I get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Reeves?
Here.
Councilmember McKee Cant?
Here.
Councilmember Tripp?
Here.
Vice Mayor Knight?
Here.
Mayor Moller?
Here, and let the record reflect that. All the council members and the chairman of the president for the record. And if we could all stand and say a pleasant wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the adoption of today's agenda. Do we have any public comment from the public? I get a motion and a second.
An adoption of the agenda?
By a second. So we have a motion by Knight and a second by McKee Cant. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And by a saying, okay, that the agenda for today is approved. And seeing no members of the public present, do we have any public comment that came in by you now?
No, Mayor.
I don't hear much. One second, we might have some audio issues.
So I would like to next turn this, we're in item six. This is town council work protocols workshop. And I'd like to hear from our interim town manager.
So thank you all for coming this morning. It's been a busy few months. I want to channel my inner Steve Rogers and ask you to reflect on where you've been. Come a long way since you formed a group earlier in 2023. And it's important to take a moment to recognize that you've accomplished a lot. You held your first session, your protocol sessions and your team building sessions. And we put a pause on that. And then you put a lot of effort going forward to get your budget in place to where it can be adopted this month. Your may, if you don't remember, was very busy. If you weren't having a regularly scheduled council meeting, you were having a budget recession. So you've accomplished a lot with that. And then most importantly, you as a group came together and did what took higher replacements. And so we, as an audience, felt that sense of pride from you when you were announcing Brad and the fact that you had hired our new town manager. And we thank you for that. And we thank you very appreciative for that. And now on the flip side, I'm channeling Brad Ralston and encouraging you to work through this protocol session. So what Brad has asked us to do is work through these protocol sessions and focus on the governance part of this. So prior, our efforts in March were tied together, protocols and goal setting and team building, kind of a big group effort. So what we've done or are hoping to do is carve out the governance portion of that and focus on the protocols and get the protocols portion of this carved out and set and done or set in place. So when Brad gets here and he's at a little time on the ground and gets to know all of you, he can then schedule the future goal setting and team building effort that had begun back in March. And so for today's effort, we really are focused on the governance portion of that bigger effort that you have taken on early on in your career together as a new council. So with that, I just wanted to compliment you for taking a moment and recognize as a group, you've accomplished quite a lot in the six months that you've been a group together. We commend you for that. And staff appreciates all of the effort that has gone into that. And so with that, I'll end it off to our friends from ILG.
All right, thank you. Let me give them a microphone and waiting for our second one.
You guys want to walk to talk? No. Does it come off of the?
Yes.
Stand? Okay. All right. Sounds like it's working. Okay. So good morning, everybody. Welcome back to our next session. John recapped it well. I'll go through a little bit of what we covered in just a moment also, but have just a few housekeeping items before we jump in there. So hello again. I think you all remember me, but I'm Melissa Keen with ILG and I'm joined by my colleague, Taylor Buck. So we'll be facilitating this morning's workshop with definitely some input from Gary and John and discussion from you all as we go through this morning's session. So a softball question for you guys, just to get in the mood. Anybody want to share something fun they did this weekend? You don't have to, but just a quick round robin if anybody wants to. Anybody wants to share?
You know what we did? We flew a kite at Vineyard Park in the winds. And that was really fun to be out there and people were coming out of their condos to go, wow, that is some fun activity in Yountville. Something different. Want to share? Pass it this way?
I thought you went on a bike ride, too.
I did, and I watched a mixed nuts play baseball. It was busy.
Well, no, speaking wasn't fun. So it was mostly because of my father, her father-in-law fell and so Peg is up in Sacramento helping him. So hopefully we'll plan some activities later in June and July.
Didn't do anything fun either.
I don't want to share.
Thank you.
I'm like, I got something.
Nothing fun, Mayor? Okay.
I was writing a clinical phase two study report.
That doesn't sound fun to me, but maybe that's fun for you. I don't know. My best friend's little boy turned two this weekend, so I got to go to a toddler birthday, which is also not fun by some people's standards, but it was, it was very adorable. So just wanted to kick things off, get everybody opportunity to share if they wanted to. So thank you. So a couple of quick objectives for today. So we're going to start off, we're going to review some of the public meeting practices. Gary's going to share some, some best practices and some reminders in that space. And then the bulk of today's agenda, we're really going to go through a discussion on the, the new draft protocols and hopefully get those moved forward. So here's a quick overview of our agenda. So we have a quick welcome and then I'm going to turn it over to Gary. We'll talk about the protocols and then we'll talk about next steps. So depending on where that conversation ends up, we'll talk about where we go from here. We have another session scheduled for next month and what that will look like is a little bit dependent on, on how the conversation goes today and where we want to go. And then I promise we'll wrap up by noonish, get you on with your day. I know some of you have some other, other obligations for the day. So that's a quick overview of the agenda, some housekeeping reminders. We don't have any scheduled breaks today because it's a pretty quick session and we've got a lot to cover. But if you need to take a break, grab water, et cetera, please feel free. Also, please try to limit cell phone use and keep that on silent so that we don't have the interruptions. We can kind of keep things moving forward. Judging by how the former discussions went, I don't think we need this, but just a reminder, this is something we always keep in our, our slide decks to really aim for that respectful, meaningful discussion and making sure everybody has a chance to, to step up and step back and talk through their, share their opinions and really seek that common, that common goal, that common good for the, for the council and for the, for the town. So John did a really great job of recapping already, but just wanted to share some reminders and some, some kudos, if you will, for some of the conversations we've already had so far. As we had two workshops all the way back in March and you've done a ton of things since then with the budget and the, the hiring process and all of that. But just to remind you where we've been, in those two workshops in March, we, we really set that foundation. We talked through the foundations for high performing councils. We talked through effective leadership and culture and roles and responsibilities and some governance tools that you guys can all have in your, your toolboxes as you move forward into the role as, as council members and, and mayors. And then we dove in the beginning of the conversation we're going to have today around council protocols and really identified some of the areas of interest for that and really kicked off the conversation as at the stage for the next two workshops that we're going to do over the next couple of months to really dig into the protocols and make them what they need to be for you all as a council. We also talked about your strategic framework, the vision and the mission as they exist and what tweaks might need to be made to those. So we can potentially revisit that conversation. That was earmarked at the last meeting as well. And then we did the priority setting exercise where we talked through all of the things that are on the, on the list in terms of priorities and needs and vision for the community. And then you all did the really hard work of narrowing that down and adopting and thinking through what those highest priorities really were for you all as a council and for the town. So again, kudos for all of the work that's been done so far and since we've been here in the last couple of months, but just wanted to give you a little bit of a reminder to set the stage for where we are today and what we're going to be working through in terms of digging in deeper to the council meeting protocols. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary to kick us off with a kind of a legal framework and some reminders about public meetings in particular.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members, also Melissa, Taylor. ILG has been great. I want to talk about two things. So the framework for looking at these protocols and then also some guiding principles and sort of the legal backdrop to this. When you think about protocols, your authority for adopting these is found in the Brown Act. Brown Act says that you can adopt policies and procedures for how you conduct your meetings. It doesn't give a lot of other detail, but it does say that you can do that. You also have inherent authority as a legislative body to adopt policies and procedures that govern your meetings. So you have that just because you are a town council and so you have the authority to do that. There are some requirements in the Brown Act for things like public comment, when you have to allow it, when you don't have to allow it, for how long can you limit public comment to a certain period of time or an overall period of time on a particular item? You can do both, by the way. But there isn't a lot of guidelines beyond that in what the Brown Act gives you for authority for protocols. As a result, different councils have different protocols. Some of them are quite short and some of them are very, very long. When we were looking at an example to provide and what we came up with to send you, we looked at the examples that ILG had collected from lots of different councils across the state. And we used one city's example as a starting place, revised out some of the provisions that were in there that didn't seem applicable to the town and then sent along that draft for you. That is not to say that this is the draft that staff would like you to adopt. This is for comment and discussion for you all to provide us feedback and then we will include, revise, add, amend based on the direction that we received from you all. And we're happy to do that. Mention Rosenberg's Rules because your protocols, your current protocols, and then also the ones that are here before you today incorporate by reference Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And we are all grateful to Judge Rosenberg that he spent time and did this. For those of you who have ever worked with Roberts Rules, Cal City still uses Roberts Rules. Some other legislative bodies you're on regionally might use Roberts Rules as well. It's very lengthy. When you buy the handbook, it's about 250 pages or so. And it's like an annotated statute for the lawyer in the room. So you have to like understand the different sub interpretations of all the different rules. It's difficult to apply. It often causes more conflict than it solves, in my opinion. And most councils have moved to Rosenberg's Rules, as you have, and we're hoping that you carry that over. Wouldn't see any reason not to. But for discussion purposes, the Rosenberg's Rules are really about how the five of you conduct yourselves at a meeting. So how do you bring a matter up for business? How do you make a motion? How does that work? How do you sit up on the dais? What are the different motions that you can make? How does that voting occur? And that's it. They start and end with that. The Rosenberg's Rules are really about just the five of you during an official meeting and how you conduct business. In other words, how you make a decision and give guidance to staff or vote something into law or into, into effect or not. Your protocols go a little bit further than that. You'll notice that there are some motions in Rosenberg's Rules here. There are three basic motions and then you've got discussions on super majority votes and counting votes and abstentions and, and things like that and recusals. The protocols go a little further and have some additional motions that are in here in the version that's in front of you. That is normal and there's no reason why you can't create more motions for yourselves in the protocols. And most councils do. Your current protocols do have additional motions in there as well. It's really a reflection of current practice, right? So most councils don't, for example, strictly adhere to the motion to amend versus substitute motion procedure. The reason being that oftentimes it's more of a discussion between you and one of you will say, is it a right if you amend it? Or is it a right if you just change your motion? And that's called a friendly amendment, for example. So Rosenberg's Rules doesn't talk about friendly amendments, but that's captured in the draft that's in front of you. And so there are some additional motions that are here today. So I might have already captured all this in my first slide. That's right. He's still a judge in Yolo County, by the way. If you're ever there, thank him for his rules. Roberts Rules was created in 1915 and it reads like it was. And the rules are about the meetings and how they are conducted. So these are good to review, understand these, except as modified in your protocols, these rules will apply to your meetings. So that's sort of the layer. This is the base and then you have some modifications in the form of additional motions that are in your protocols themselves. So we'll talk about the First Amendment briefly regarding these meetings because it guides what's in the protocols and how you all interact with the public and then also how you all participate in the meeting too. Because of course you have First Amendment rights, just like members of the public do too. So when the courts look at these issues, they think about the forum or the environment in which the speech is made. There are traditional public fora, which are parks and sidewalks, for example. Limited public fora, which are areas that the government has opened up for a specific type of speech or content of speech. And then non-public fora, which is a government area that is not designated for any type of speech. A public meeting under the Brown Act is a limited public forum. And the reason for that is people are not invited to speak on anything they want. That's what they can do out on the sidewalks and in the parks. They are invited here to speak on things that are on your agenda and things that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the town, meaning that the town has the right or the ability to do something about it. So if someone were to come and speak about a foreign affairs issue, for example, you might reasonably conclude that that's not within the town's subject matter jurisdiction and therefore is not something that can be the topic of public discussion at your meeting. On the other hand, if you adopt a resolution taking a position on the foreign affairs matter, then you have made it within your subject matter jurisdiction and you would need to accept comment on that. In a limited public forum, like a town council meeting, you can limit speech to topics that are on the agenda within your subject matter jurisdiction, but you cannot discriminate based on viewpoint or content within those topics. And so that's the First Amendment requirement, meaning that different opinions support or oppose on something that's on your agenda or viewpoints within there. So different people support it, but for different reasons, meaning that anyone who wants to speak on something on your agenda needs to be given the opportunity to do so and cannot be treated differently based on speech. So ways that it may be treated differently, the length of time you give to speakers, for example, or your reaction, or whether or not someone is removed from a meeting. So the amount of time of speech that's given to public comment is usually three minutes per person, per item. And that's your way of showing that regardless of what your speech is, you get three minutes just like everybody else. You can change that and occasionally if there are lots of speakers or you have a long agenda, you might move your speech to two minutes per item. That is acceptable as long as you're doing it for reasons other than viewpoint and content and speech, if you're doing it because you have a long agenda or because there are lots of speakers at the meeting, for example. And then removing speakers. There are, this has been heavily litigated. You do have the right to recess your meeting. You do have the right to remove people from the meeting who are actually disruptive, such that the meeting cannot proceed or have made a true threat of force. If those things are met, you can have someone removed from your meeting. A caution though, because it has to be conduct, not speech. So you have to remove them for conduct that is actually disrupting the meeting and preventing you from proceeding and not just because of their speech, which might be loud or it might be offensive or things like that. The legislative privilege also applies at your meeting, just like it does in the state legislature or at another legislative proceeding, meaning that what people say is protected and they have a privilege in that from certain types of lawsuits. So the means in practice is that speech that might border on the slanderous or defamatory or outright false is usually protected in a legislative proceeding, including in front of the council. And is, if it's on the topic that's there, is their viewpoint or their content. So the type of speech that is allowed at a, a town council meeting is sometimes directed at you personally and you might feel is false and it is also fully protected. Those are the backgrounds for these and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me, this is going to be hard. Got to pass it around so you have to kind of remember and if I forget, let me know. So, oh, good. All right, councilmember Tripp.
So my question is, and I'm guessing there might be some lines on this, how, how small can you make the time for people? I know you can go, you said three is standard, you could go to two. Is there kind of a rule of thumb before you're infringing on someone's First Amendment rights if we said a minute or is there a rule of thumb?
I do not believe the courts have said there's a time under which you will be violating their First Amendment rights. They will probably look at the facts of a particular case and say, well, does this effectively prohibit the speech on the topic in some way? As long as you still have an opportunity to provide the comment and to do it. As you probably know, Congress requires everything to be in writing and submitted 72 hours before and there's no in-person comments. So that apparently complies with the First Amendment. So I think you could come up with different procedures and a shorter amount of time and still be within it as long as you're providing an opportunity for that speech to occur.
And does it have to be actual speech or could it be speech in a combination of, as you say, written comments? So if somebody wrote something and then also spoke or is it, do they have an absolute right to speak as opposed to write it in?
Yeah, so speech in this context just means any kind of comment written or oral in this. And so they don't have a right to actually speak. You can provide public comment under the Brown Act. So, so I do think there's a right under the Brown Act, just to qualify that momentarily, to provide public comment before or during the speech that's occurring. So, so yes, I do think there's a right to provide that at the meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reeves?
I wanted to ask, I know in general, public comment, we don't respond to the actual topic or anything like that unless we're asking a question. If someone is saying something that's incorrect or untrue, is there a possibility of a response at that point?
The Brown Act does allow a brief response to general public comment. So the risk is if a majority of you have a discussion and it's not on the agenda, that you've now discussed something that's not on the agenda in violation of the Brown Act. But the Brown Act does specifically allow you to briefly respond to general public comment. And that can be into the fact scenario, you're saying, that is not true or I disagree. You could, you could make that comment, yes.
Thank you, Attorney, our town attorney, Bill, and Gary for your, for your report. So I had a general question about this public, you know, the time of public comment. My general feeling is that the few people we have speak, I, I don't think we should be limiting people under the three minutes. But in reading through the motions and things, and things like that, my question is, it seems like there's the ability for the council to make a motion to limit discussion or debate on an issue. Does that, is that time limit include the public and could that be done after the discussion occurs? So if we have a three-minute rule and there's 40 people that want to speak, do we need to make that motion to limit, limit debate before it starts or could we do that at a later point?
So the motion to limit debate is debate amongst yourselves. So for the five of you on a topic. And so you can call the question, which is a, a motion, if it's seconded and carried, that requires the vote to be called. So there's no more discussion among the five of you. So that's about you all. The public comment would still need to occur as allowed, subject to your general authority to reduce the overall time on a topic or the per speaker time on it.
In our previous protocols, it talked about a person being a public, the speaker for a group. Is that, is that language that would have to be specifically in our protocols to, to deter, to allow that or to limit the conversation of some members if they choose a speaker or?
It does not have to be in your protocols and the speaker for a group provision still would not prevent the individual members of that group from coming up and speaking if they'd like to. It's common in the protocols to have something that says multiple speakers or speakers that come in a group are encouraged to have a spokesperson come up instead of each of them individually, but the town can't prevent the individuals from coming up to speak. And so you can always make that request, whether or not it's in the protocols or not. The mayor or, or in the absence of the mayor, the vice mayor running the meeting could always request that for any item. If a group of you are here together and you'd like to send a representative up, please do.
Good. I just want a other quick question. Side to reading recently in the California City News Newsletter about a city council in Red Bluff that is censuring a council member because he's basically attacking another council member on Facebook and maybe in council meetings. Is that, are those censure rules required to be in the protocols or is there a, is there a state law there that, that allows a city to take action? It's just, I was just curious because I read it a couple of days ago. Thank you.
Yeah, they do not need to be in your protocols. The ability to censure is something the council just has inherently based on your status as a legislative body. The procedure for censuring requires notice and an opportunity to be heard. It does affect a due process property reputational interest that a council member has. So should that ever come up, there would have to be notice of the specific basis for it and a hearing of sorts where the council member who's being censured would have an opportunity to present and rebut and, and discuss it. And then of course, a censure, if adopted by the council, is really just that. It doesn't have any force in effect beyond the weight it has to you all and then also to the public and sort of the impact of what's adopted.
Any other council member that has spoken want to ask a question on this topic?
I just had a quick follow-up comment that we could table, but it goes to exactly what Eric was talking about and that is the section that deals with the spokesperson for group presentations. And my only thought is when we get to it, there is something in here that says that the group speaker must contact the town clerk prior to the meeting request, prior to the meeting for any additional time. So I would like to just take a look at that when we get there as to maybe that could be changed to should or if possible or something like that. So that's on page 16 and it goes to what, just what Eric was talking about.
Okay, so with no additional questions on this section, we'll try to continue. Okay, so with no additional questions on this section, I'd like to continue.
That's what I had.
All right. Can I grab this back from you, too? Thank you. Okay, so now, we're gonna move into the actual meat of the conversation. So, you all have received, I believe, a draft of some updated protocols. Gary, I know you did a little bit of an overview of the process so far, but anything else you can share in terms of how the scope of the protocols was narrowed down, or what's in there, just to give a little bit of an overview before we dive into the conversation?
Sure. So, your current protocols have some overlap with state law, and some other requirements that are found elsewhere. There's nothing wrong with doing that, and in some ways, it provides further clarity with the responsibilities of the council. The risk, though, is that that state law changes over time, and then you need to update the protocols. So, things that were found elsewhere are not included in here. So, things like Political Reform Act, Government Code 1090, a lot of detail on vacancies, the filings of Form 700s, campaign statements, a lot of the other information that's in your current protocols. Those requirements continue to exist, and are imposed by state law, and so we're not included here. The goal was to have something that was a little more streamlined for the conduct of your meetings than what was currently there, and that was based on discussions that I had with Brad, on his thoughts for this, John, staff. So, that's how we came up with what we're saying.
Any questions on that?
Thank you, Gary. So, it's just a, just an overall general, so now, thank you for giving the background in terms of why we have this particular protocol in place, or this draft for us to discuss. But, so, just to be positive, I, I like the fact that this current draft, those bullet points in the beginning, I think I saw those in another city council's protocols, that were in the very front page, where it talks about rules of procedure per conduct. I mean, and I think that's important. I also generally like the fact that, from our old protocols, we removed a lot of language that, that described conduct of, of a public speaking at our meetings, and, and criticizing council members for packing the house, for, I mean, just, I think, a lot of odd language that was in there. But generally, when I looked, I looked at our old protocols, it really seemed to follow what I looked on the ICMA, the city, city manager's website, that old protocol kind of followed their, their general steps. This protocol generally seems to speak only to the running of our council meetings, and while I agree, council benefits, and maybe Brown Act stuff, maybe don't belong necessarily in council meetings, what it seems to miss is that somehow we need to have a protocol for running meetings, and then we have to have, in essence, a council member manual. Like, every, every business has a, an employee manual that includes many of the things, I think, that were in our old protocols. So, I guess that my question is, will we have two documents, where someone new coming on the council will have an employee manual to see everything, and then generally, for this conversation, there's issues that, that are not in these protocols, about talking about the selection of vice mayor, and, and how we bring, I mean, well, there is a conversation about how we bring new items to the council, but, but I, I mean, at some point, I'd like a further conversation with that. But, generally, it doesn't have, it misses some of the points that, like, the, the role of the mayor, vice mayor, council members, and, and selections. Will we talk about that in a different time, or, that's my question?
I echo what Vice Mayor Knight said. I was thinking, we need like a personnel handbook, or a council handbook, because a lot of the, the essence of our roles and responsibilities, and what we do with commissions and councils, as a council, are missing. And also, the strategic planning framework, which I, I kind of feel should be in the protocols, based on the fact that the town staff uses the strategic plan for each of their staff reports. And as town, the interim town manager explained during our last session, that those are used to align with anything, any of the initiatives. So, those need to stay in there somewhere, and, and having a second handbook, I think would, even as we're getting a new HR manager, would help, that we're all gonna be on the same page, and it makes the protocols for meetings, and then the protocols for our council operations.
We just want to pause. If we are gonna get to the what's missing, that's kind of the first question on the book. So, maybe we can pause, any, thank you, sorry. Any response to the, to the idea here on the, the two handbooks, or should we be talking about those policies as part of this conversation? So, I don't know, John, Gary, if you have any thoughts on that question, before we jump in?
Well, do you, do you want to wait until we get to the what's missing discussion, and then respond there?
And then we can figure out the best way to-
I mean, I'm happy to do it now, if you'd like, but we can wait, too.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. We can kind of talk through the policies that need to be included, and then maybe the best approach to get that handled. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Is our hand?
So, just to that, when we have that discussion about the employee handbook, I, I'm pretty confused, so, what that even means. So, just be thinking about, when we get to that part of the discussion, what types of things that you have questions about, like, as a council member, should I do this, or, I don't know how to do that. So, if we could be more specific, I think it might probably help staff and our attorney figure out really kind of what you're looking for, and the best way to address that. And, you know, also, in terms of strategic plan, I think we should kind of keep that as a, yet, a different discussion, because it really has a different purpose for a different reason, and so maybe we just need to bifurcate a lot of the stuff we're kind of talking about now. And also, just a future thought, when we, I do know we've had discussions about a rotation of the vice mayor, that doesn't necessarily have to go in protocols. Gary can talk about this, that, that is something that we can do by putting it in our municipal code. So, there are other ways to handle some of this, just so it's kind of a more of a concise document. And, anyway, just some thoughts there. So-
Since I have the mic, all quick talk. And one way to maybe organize this, as we had suggested a separate book, is to look at the table of contents for our existing protocols, and say, which ones do we feel need to be in a new protocol chapter, and which ones maybe could be tabled for that separate contents? Because I, I mean, right down the line, I can say, Section 2, Section 7 would be in that handbook. So, that might be one way for us all to read from the same page, so to speak.
And that's my only issue. My only thought is, there is a value, it seems, to an employee manual, when a new council member comes on, instead of saying, "Oh, go take a look at the municipal code." I think there's general issues. At some point, this, this employee handbook might include the benefits and things, and it would change over time as we do it, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the necessary focus of the protocols. I just want us to have a general conversation. When we talk about what's missing, is it seems like our current protocol is, in essence, a rewriting of Rosenberg's Rules. So, why have that if we have Rosenberg's Rules, even though I like the general beginning where there's these points in it about how we communicate? But then again, just generally, my concern is that, I, I like the fact that we're, we're putting together rules for how we run a meeting, but we do more than that as a council. And I was looking, like, on ILG's website, on strategy, strategies for creating a more collaborative, effective council. And I don't see any wording in this protocols of how we encourage ourselves, or what we do to be more collaborative, generally, as a whole council, including all the activities we do outside of the council chambers.
Is it okay, Mayor? I like, in general, the slimmed-down version, because it's no longer 52 pages, so I fully support that. And I think it's a very nice document. In general, though, I do agree that it would be nice, personally, to have the strategic values, especially, because some really do relate to the protocols, like, one of our values is an engaged community. So, this, this is a big part of an engaged community, so I kind of agree with Robin. So, my bottom line is, I like the shorter version. It seems to me, there might be some things to include. The mayor asked about what we would like to see in sort of a handbook, and I think a good example is some of the benefits information, which was in the old protocols. And in general, I think a lot of times, things that are gonna get changed, or will change, it's good to put that kind of stuff in a handbook, because it doesn't necessarily need to be formally handled. It could be things like, I had a huge amount of confusion about how to get organized on benefits and stuff, and it would have been nice to have, instead of me trying to interpret a resolution, somebody to lay it out somewhere in a handbook, because what was in the old protocols was not entirely accurate anymore, because things change. So, those would be the kind of things that I think would be good to be in a handbook. So, I could see beefing this up a little bit, but in general, I'm personally in favor of having a little slimmer, and putting other changeable information that doesn't require formal council action into a different document.
So, I also agree that, that the council is at a disadvantage when they first join, a council person is, because we don't know the ropes, and things change all the time. And it feels like this idea of a handbook for council members is, would be an important thing to pass on to the next group of people who are going to be council members. And also, I mean, when you look through this draft protocol, there is room to add bullets on that first page, which I did. I said, "Be collaborative and cooperative in the, the approach to work on the council." And I think those kind of qualitative aspects of being a council member that are listed on this sheet, we could sort of beef up a little bit, and, and then go into the, sort of, maybe the key issues are the timeframe for public comment, and how we approach delivering information about how to make a public comment. Like, do we have in our agenda that you can request more time if you're speaking for several people, so that people know that that's a possibility? So, in a big issue that's coming before the council, and we have a full house, maybe that, that knowledge would allow people to get together to create a statement that doesn't necessitate us shortening the time for public comment. So, I'm in favor of actually expanding the time for public comment, because there are several instances, even in this draft, that says the mayor may change the, the time limit for reasons of brevity, or whatever. So, it seems to me that we should start out with a timeframe, it used to be five minutes. So, why not start out with that? We don't get that many people on a council meeting agenda normal day, that want to speak for the, for the community. But, it, three minutes is a real constraint, and a lot of people need a little bit of warm-up, because they're not public speakers, and they can't get their point across until they get warmed up. So, it just feels like that's one of the values in the community that I heard in the election, was, "We don't get to speak. Everybody gets to speak, the council speaks for hours, and we don't get a chance." So, I'm really interested in changing that dynamic.
I want us to start big picture, before we get into refinements of the protocol. Oh, thank you. Okay. Yeah, so I want us to, to start, you know, big picture, big buckets of things that might be missing, some of these things that you're flagging that might need to be either embedded in here, or in another, another handbook, or another type of document. I promise we will have time to get into the refinements of what's in front of you, and it looks like you all have notes, and so I don't think we need to take any time to, to give you guys time to review that. You all did your homework, which is fantastic. But, I just want to make sure we're capturing the big-picture items, so that we can bring something back at the next meeting that reflects the overall approach that you guys are looking for. So, let's start here. I think this is where you guys were already going, but what's missing? So, I've heard some things around the strategic, the strategic vision, maybe some other things as it relates to benefits, or things like that, but we're gonna take some notes. Taylor's got her word doc going, and I'm gonna make sure we capture the big buckets of things here. But, what's missing? Let's start there.
I feel like one thing that is missing is the ability of council members who are in the minority to be able to represent their constituency. When we only allow items to be placed on the agenda that receive a majority vote, that means the majority is determining every agenda item. And I feel like there are other councils who give minority council members, or any council member, freebies, like, okay, one per quarter, or two per quarter, you get to put something on the agenda for a discussion. And so, that, that allows more diverse points of view to be brought up, and a discussion to be had that maybe the majority is avoiding. So, I just feel like that's one thing that's missing from this, is the ability to expand that definition of who's allowed to put something on the agenda.
So, that is a refinement of the agenda setting section, correct? Okay. Let's try to, I just want to make sure we don't miss anything, so-
I agree with that.
Big buckets, okay.
That, that issue get discussed, how things get on the agenda. Because I, I don't actually remember reading in the new one, but the existing one, it's three people, and I'm not sure if it's in here. I don't recall seeing it.
I agree. We could work through that, I mean, whether it's, I mean, I just had that experience in the, maybe the second, my second year on the council, where, and in a general conversation afterwards, I think other city councils have other way, other issues, and it may be, if it's not just one council member asking to put something on, it's at least a council member, as we do, as we require, you know, not to, you know, to not violate the Brown Act, that you find, if there's another council member that agrees with you, at least you, there, there's, there's two council members that, that agree to put, that think this is important, and that we should maybe limit the number. I mean, the general rule of a majority of council deciding, I think, is a, is, is probably a, a basic rule for running a meeting, but we may want to limit, or provide the opportunity for council members in, in a position to have one or two items brought forward in a way that we all can agree.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay, okay. We're too close. We're too close. Okay, I do kind of want to pin this conversation. We will get to the refinements of what's existing in the protocols, but I just want to make sure we're not missing anything, any big, any big groups of, big buckets of things. So, I, I heard the benefits piece come up. What's missing? What do we need to be thinking about? What do you need to know as a new council member? Okay. Want to move that one around? I don't, I'm worried about walking by the microphone with this one.
Very quickly, I, I think missing is a, a statement about how the vice mayor is chosen, because I would ask Gary, to, otherwise, we have to leave it to every council to decide, and, or by resolution, or some other method. I think it would be simpler to put it in here.
And, you know, that, that was the only thing I was gonna mention, too, but I'm fine with putting that, you know, in our, in our municipal code, too, because we do have a section, remember, in our municipal code, and we're really not talking about that today. And we're really not talking about that today. But that is another way to kind of codify that. And I think that what we're really talking about, if you really want the specific there, and we can get into that now, is that we would like to have a one-year rotation, and it goes from the most senior member to the most junior, and then back around. Is that what everyone is in agreement, or not?
I just want to make sure we're capturing this before we get into the nitty-gritty.
I don't know that I would do it that way.
Okay. But I just want to go back. Vice Mayor, you started by saying there was things missing. So, what else are we feeling that's missing? I just want to make sure we're capturing this. I promise we'll get to the refinements, but I want to make sure we have this.
Wait, are we talking about things that are missing? What do we need the public to hear?
So, I'm sorry.
Are we talking about things that we think are missing from this, or that we want to put in a separate document? I think you need two lists.
Let's throw it all at the wall, and then we'll figure out the best way to approach it.
Okay, well, that seems redundant.
Yeah, but, so, I've.
How would you like to approach it?
I would kind of go with what I think Pam was suggesting, but she can correct me. We don't have to call it a handbook, but some sort of more informal manual versus the protocols, which are adopted by the council and put on the, you know, more formal process. So, we'd have two lists. So, like, benefits, I'm happy it's out, personally, but I do think it needs to go somewhere. And then strategic framework.
I agree. I think we just need to focus on two different documents, and what's a priority in each document. And then the other issue that if you're adding, if we're talking about the protocols, is, as Councilmember Reeves is talking about, public comment period and the timelines for that. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Seems like that's it. Are we ready for details?
Okay. Do we want to talk through what needs to be in the handbook? Because we have limited time, limited meetings. So, can we get a list going of that, so that the staff team also has an idea of the pieces that you think need to be there?
Well, the first thing they want to know about is council benefits.
So, that's Section 7 in the old protocol.
How about in direction with staff? And the chain of command?
I generally think that what's in our old protocols, that in essence, we should remove from our old protocols, what has to do with the protocol of running a meeting, which would be in a council meeting protocol. And everything else had a place. I mean, that would be a manual for a new council member. I mean, from the Brown Act to reiterating the section on the role of mayor, vice mayor, and council members, I think, and council-staff attorney relationships. Everything but procedure for meetings, I think, belongs in that employee manual.
I am looking specifically under existing protocols, Section 2 for statutory requirements, regulatory guidelines, halfway down when we start getting into the CIP personnel-related documents. Electronic communications policy, well, I guess that could go either way. But the personnel-related documents, those would go in the handbook, we'll call it for now. Council organization, when it goes into municipal elections, terms of office, candidate orientation, I am not certain that needs to be in the protocols. And so, jumping ahead, Section 4 Code of Ethics should stay. Section 5 should stay. Local government advocacy should stay. And then we get into Section 7 again. And as far as 8, boards and commissions, that might be something for the handbook, too.
Just want to make sure, so, you were running through the old, you were running through the old one. And so, most of that, you're essentially agreeing with the vice mayor in terms of keeping a lot of the content from the old protocols in a handbook, if you will?
Yes, in a separate.
Okay.
Okay. I would just like to, okay, first of all, it's 11 o'clock, and we've got a lot to kind of get through, because our second one was going to be kind of a follow-up to this. And I'll get everyone's opinion, but is there a way that maybe we could make some lists about, or not? But really focus on, and I don't have a copy of the old protocols, I'm looking at the new ones here. So, I'm very confused about, and I think if I'm confused, I'm just going to speculate somebody else here might be as well. If we could just really focus on these protocols for today, just to kind of get some forward progress. And then everybody can kind of take notes, and maybe we can have subsequent meetings that would go through a handbook. And maybe, Gary, you could refocus this again. But these are town council protocols. And yes, they're a lot having to do with running a meeting, but if we can, like, assume that that's really the broad scope, we want to get through that. We can add other things, like a handbook, or, you know, whatever we're going to do with the strategic planning. And again, strategic planning, just kind of think about, we can discuss that in more detail later, that's going to be something we do annually. And so, we have to, you know, we'll be updating protocols annually. There might be another way to refer to that and get that someplace. So, just a way so we don't have to do this every year. So, with that, any thoughts on the focus of today's discussion? Because we're halfway through trying to get through the council protocols.
I will just say that what we were on was the handbook. So, if we want to not go there for, to try to keep this within a meeting, then we go back to that other sheet of paper, right, for the protocols, which hopefully that'll alleviate confusion. If we're going to stay on protocols, forget the handbook now.
So, I want to go to staff. Staff, do you have a comment?
I think this is on. Just had one overarching comment, and following up on the vice mayor's comment about the different provisions here, it sounds like there's consensus that some things in the current protocol should remain, in one way or the other. I know we're focusing on the draft that was here, but, you know, obviously, your previous council concluded that having it in a single document was an easier thing than having two separate documents. So, we could also reorganize it such that the meetings are up front, and then your other stuff is behind it. So, we're not wedded to the draft that we gave you, certainly, and we're here for feedback. So, but just a thought.
I think that's a good suggestion, that one is always better than two documents, so.
Well, that was going to be my kind of question. Is there one advantage over another in terms of ability to change or formality for putting it in the protocol versus a handbook? Legally, I mean, you work a lot with towns. Is it more cumbersome as laws change? Because some of our protocols just were outdated, just by virtue of things changing.
Yeah, so, once something's adopted by the council, it will have to be changed in the future, if at all, by the council. My thought on the handbook that's being described is, if you're looking for a single document that will explain things like benefits and reimbursements, and sort of the day-to-day of how you do things as a council member, that doesn't necessarily have to be adopted by you all, because those policies exist somewhere. Staff could take them and put it into a book. So, you could also provide direction to staff and to your incoming town manager to say, "Please compile this into a document that can be provided to us." And then that could live with staff, and staff could update it and do it as they do. If you adopt it here, it's got to come back to you. So, that's the procedural implication of including it in a document that you adopt.
I would like to pursue that angle, because I think that that would be the most helpful for incoming council members. And I think it would be nice to have a streamlined document for protocols. And in our defense, we did start with what's missing. So, what was missing was all the things we're talking about right now. So, I just want to say that that's a procedural problem. But, yeah.
One of the things I want to acknowledge was a letter that we got from a member of the public regarding a code of conduct for public meeting participation. That would be on each agenda for, you know, we limit people's times, but I think we could help, in a collaborative spirit for the town, to kind of lay out expectations of how we expect them to address the council, and tips and tricks for whatnot to do also.
Are you suggesting putting that in? The meeting protocol?
Yes. This is something I'm always very, very cautious, but I'm going to go back to the town attorney right now, in terms of what you kind of talked about earlier, in terms of free speech. I know we like civility, we like for us to be civil, as well as the public, but, and primarily could you really address, I never like to get sued. And of course, you start limiting and even kind of suggesting some limitations about what the public and how they can address you, and what they can say. Maybe you could even give us some case examples where something you may not even anticipate can have, that you would put in something like that, can really have a lot of unintended consequences. So, even though I'm trying to move things along, I think this is a very important topic for us to think about right now.
Yeah, so, on codes of conduct, to follow up on the free speech discussion, typically, they will have some language about not having offensive speech, or not having indicoris, which is a word I had to Google, too, but not being in decorum in your, in the area or the forum that you're in. Rude is sometimes no rude speech. So, all of those are content and viewpoint, likely content-based discriminations on speech. Because what you're saying is, the way you're saying it, and the speech that's coming out is offensive or rude. And so, when those types of things are included in protocols, there have been lawsuits, and they have been successful. Because if someone is prevented from giving speech, it is perceived to be rude by one person, it's not necessarily perceived to be rude by another. So, you certainly can adopt a code of conduct for yourselves. And so, the beginning of this talks about that, and being respectful in how you treat each other. But I would be very cautious about adopting a code of conduct for speakers, especially ones that touch on things like that, like not being rude or offensive.
I do believe there could be language that, you know, it's our code of conduct, it can say, "This is the council's code of conduct, and we encourage our attendees to participate." I mean, "Treat all participants with kindness, respect. Attack the problem, not the person." It does say in our existing protocols, "Do not address the council members by name and call them out." So, there are things that we can do that aren't saying, "Don't be rude, don't be this." But, I mean, this is coming from the public after a meeting, and I feel there's value. And she also, she offered, "Disclose all potential conflicts, respect the process for the meeting participation, refrain from disruptive." I mean, we already have that. But I just think there's some coaching that we could give to all of us that would apply also to members of the public.
Yes, agreed.
I'm just making sure it's okay.
Just making a round trip.
Yeah, I do, yes. I appreciate Councilmember McKee-Cants' comments on that. If we could put some language in there that doesn't restrict public, someone's right to free speech, then I think it's good to provide information to residents about conduct in meetings. But I just wanted to first, basically, say that I retract my idea, the concept of just one document, because I'm hearing from Councilmember Reeves, and then the town attorney talking about, staff could put something together that's not a legislative document that we have to approve. It'd be much better to have it be done informally by the new town manager and staff. So, if we're going back and specifically talking about these protocols, my suggestion is the fact that we need more conversation about the time limit for the public to speak. But I would support removing the language that limits the presiding officer, that says the presiding officer can limit speech. I don't think in our small town and the few people that speak to us, there's any reason in our document to limit, to reduce public comment to less than what we agree is the minimum. So, removing the limit setting, I think, I would recommend. The other thing is, is general, in terms of, there's some language in here about the mayor working with the town manager to put together council meeting agendas. And I generally agree, that's a good idea to help, you know, so that meetings can be organized, and the mayor and the town manager involved. I just was willing, wanting to throw out an idea that if there is an issue that may relate to like, an employee-related issue, or something that might come up in closed session, that maybe there should be language in the document that the mayor should collaborate with the vice mayor, so that we know about an issue that may be an employee-related item that comes before us, so that there's some dialogue in the council between the mayor and vice mayor. And then generally, just, I agree, again, with the Councilmember Reeves, we need more language in here that promotes collaboration. And that means, I think, language, too, in terms of how we collaborate, how we share information between the council members when we are meeting outside of our council chambers, so that we all are on the same page. So, I mean, I'm not, it's really creating an interest where we work together better as a team, when we all are aware of what's, what we're hearing out there in the community. And finding a way to share that with each other in a timely manner will, I think, help us all be better council members.
I completely echo what Eric said about the three minutes. The five years I've been here, there's not been an issue that, it seemed like a ton of people wanted to participate. But in my former existence on a planning commission, and also on the rent board, we did listen to hours and hours of public comment. And I feel personally that that's kind of the price of, not the price, but it's what we're here for. And if we get tired of listening to people over many, many hours, we get to make decisions. So, it's just part of why it's a public process. So, I really feel that's an important element. And it could be that down the road, there will be some very controversial things happening here in Yottville. Land use is one of those things that brings a lot of people out. And I feel, I've spent many, 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 many hours now in council meetings and budget meetings, but very little time listening to the public. So, I'm very happy to encourage public comment and honor public comment, and make sure that this document reflects that. So, I just wanted to say that I agree with the mayor.
If we're going to get into refinements, let's process-wise walk through the documents, and we're not jumping around. So, let's kind of dissect my section. If it works for everybody.
Maybe we could start with the first page, which is, because that's, I had some ideas, and I think other people do, too. Maybe I would just go with my idea real quick, and then I, because it's, I only have one idea, which also goes with what Eric was saying. And I think this matter of sharing information is really essential. And I don't think there's anything in the Brown Act that specifically prohibits sharing information, because without information, you can't make decent decisions. And we all, some of us more than others, have options to hear things from other decision-makers and other parts of the county. And I think it would be really helpful to be able to encourage sharing information. So, under the bullet about honest communication, I would add, being transparent with each other and sharing information as part of enabling cooperation. But I'm not wedded to that language.
I have to skip around, because we're talking about sharing information right now. I think in whatever manual we come up with, that staff might put together is, what is the purpose of council reports? the purpose of council reports? Because when we go to outside meetings, we come back and we might say, we went to the meeting and there was maybe one thing that stood out for that meeting. But what exactly do we want to derive from that meeting for the rest of the council? And I think it bears some reflection when, when you go to a meeting with in mind, how am I going to report out about this would be important for a new council member to know, I think. And I feel like there's lots of meetings happening that, that we don't really actually know the gist of, or the history even. So in the report out, it kind of, it would be good to be a learning experience for the rest of the council.
Anything else on the conduct page? So we captured the information sharing, collaboration, kind of the theme, maybe adding some language here, but any other thoughts?
I think just what Councilmember Reeves mentioned about collaboration, adding some language on, just adding information in terms of just our procedures for conduct about collaborating and using that word. It's an important, I know, part of your training, talking about that. So adding that information to our document.
Under that heading of collaboration, thinking as a team, working together as a team.
And just on those couple comments, I would really like a little more specificity on what that really means. I know they're words, but you know, it might not be obvious to everybody working as a team. I think we could probably go around this room and say five different things. So I think those are good concepts, but you know, like, you know, for example, role of good leadership. You know, these are very kind of specific comments that most people can read and really understand. There might be little nuances in how you interpret that. So if we do that, and again, this, that discussion alone can probably take, you know, like 30 minutes. How do you work, you know, what's collaborative mean to everybody? And, you know, another previous comment, I know a lot of people are new and really haven't served on a lot of different boards and commissions. And I'm more than happy when we, in January, go through those again to get everybody a lot of experience. And sometimes that's the best way. And remember too, you know, some of you are new on some of these boards and you're still learning. So how much can you tell everybody else while you're still learning? It's just kind of part of the role and, you know, to, you know, to really explain all that. I think that might be a really, a separate meeting altogether, to really go through all these boards and commissions. If everybody really wants to do that, we can review their bylaws, what their general roles are, we can bring, you know, the staff member even in to go through that. But, you know, to have kind of new people kind of feeling the elephant may not be the best way to do that. If that's what you're saying, well, what does flood control do? Or what does, you know, LAFCO do? There are ways to probably delve into that in a more sophisticated way that we, you know, could even be in the handbooks or something like that. So putting that in council protocols, just kind of, somebody who's a little more experienced and done a lot of this and been new on a lot of these boards, and I'm telling you, it's a deep dive. And it's kind of hard to, you know, teach everybody else. Sometimes you've just got to get in there and dig out the information yourself to even know what questions you want to know. So just kind of as a thought. And then back to, you know, putting stuff in here for the public as well. You know, I think that, you know, right now it says council members will abide by the following principles. So again, we have to be very careful, in my opinion, about the public. And I'm very, very reserved about restricting the public in any way and even giving them guidance. I do not want to get sued over this, and I'm telling you, it can happen so easily. I would suggest that maybe that'd be something we just wait on if we're going to like, you know, revise these maybe in a year. Let's see how things kind of go. And, you know, some people get, you know, offended easier by others, but I do respect the public and, you know, what they can go up and, you know, tell us for, you know, I go to allied council members and I've been called a two-bit politician more than you can even imagine. So it's like, you know, that's kind of part, Pam's been there, she's heard that too. So you hear a lot of stuff that sometimes you've just got to buck up a little bit about stuff. So just my thoughts. And it's 11:15.
Is this on the conduct? Or are we moving on? We're really, I think we're really having some general discussions. We're just going to have to see where this goes.
I just wanted to comment that the idea, the idea of staff or committee reports, I didn't expect to be in the protocols. I think that's something that belongs in this other document about procedural, how to be a council member. So I just think that it needed to be brought up just so we get it in the right bucket.
Just an idea, with committee report, when I used to go to sales meetings, we always had a follow-up report that is a blank, it's a template that asks specific questions. And we could certainly do that for each of the committees. So we know what eyes to dot and t's to cross as far as reporting. And that would also help us during our council meetings to have a concise report and follow-up that's consistent along the board. And Mayor Mueller, you asked what it means. So I think a bullet point about team collaboration is that we work together as a team while valuing unique opinions that may differ from your perspectives. But at the end of the day, once we, we vote and that vote is made official, we put our shoulder in and we lean together as a team. That language can be more precise, but, and I know we only have two hours, but we're here to accomplish something. And if we have input, you know, to be kept on the clock, it makes it a little hard for us to progress.
All right, town staff.
So I, I'm at a bit of disadvantage here being the interim guy on my way out. But having talked to Brad about this meeting specifically, the goal really for today, what I'm hearing from everybody is this is a much bigger, there's a lot bigger, more nebulous thing that we're talking about. So for the purposes of today and the intent of today and next, the next meeting next month is really what Brad referred to as governance. And the governance is the way, the rules, the norms and the actions that are structured for you to act as a body in the public forum. And so the things that you, it's the rules of conduct, kind of like the Rosenberg's rule of conduct. It's the rules of conduct, and I think it's the baseline that we're trying to set for you as a group moving forward. And then the other items that you're bringing up will build upon that. So I bring this up with the idea of picturing myself talking to Brad about, this is how the meeting went. And I want to, we're trying to meet that goal of getting the baseline of the governance part of it set in stone for now. It's not set in stone forever, but try to arrive at that governance piece of it. So you're all on the same page about how you're going to run the meetings and who's going to do what, when, and how you substitute motions and things like that. And then once we have that minimum baseline set, we can build upon that. And at that time, when Brad's here and participating, we can bring in the goal, the strategic framework, the other ideas about how to report out about commissions and things like that. So for the purposes of the limited time for this meeting and next time, if we can, and we're bouncing around it, but we're not quite focused on it, if we can focus on really just getting through the governance part of this, I think it would be helpful, because then that's your foundation that you build everything upon.
I see a lot of head nodding. So to that, I'm going to try to move us along. I've got some notes here. I was just a little confused a couple times and I don't, not sure if we, I think it might be a good idea unless that we specifically need to say the presiding officer, to say the mayor. Sometimes we say the mayor, sometimes we say the presiding officer. If we could standardize that as much as possible, maybe just the presiding officer, you know, and then in parentheses, you can just put mayor or something like that. So I thought it kind of jumped around a little bit there. And on the, on page seven, it, and I think this might need some more discussion by our town attorney. It says on page seven, the last paragraph, that, oh, this is a little different. The presiding officer may debate in second motions, but may not make a motion. In Robert's Rules of Order, then it says unless the presiding officer or the mayor thinks that no one else is going to do it. So which way is it? And to that point, on page eight, the first paragraph, it says, the mayor or any council member may make or second a motion. So there's several places, and I can follow up with you later where I see those, but if you could just address when the mayor can make a motion. It's obvious the mayor can second any motion, but when the mayor can make a motion or not? We could have that discussion. And then, let's see, it's also on page 15 and page eight, a few different places. And the other thing I want to kind of add is, it says on page 16, when we talk about individuals, that they will have a sign-up sheet before you speak. We've never really had one of those. I think we need to talk about whether we want one or not. And then just another, also addressing the council after public comment, and I just, maybe we can also talk about, I think we need to be careful allowing the public to address the council because other public, if we let them come back before we close the public comment and speak, we have to remember, these are one of these unintended consequences. I think it's important, to be fair, you have to let every other public have that opportunity as well. So I'm not saying we want to limit that necessarily, but just be mindful that if somebody wants to come and speak, you have to let everybody else come and have those extra five minutes and speak again. Otherwise, we're not being fair. These things just get complicated and just kind of bringing that up. And the also correction of minutes, I know sometimes that it's, they're written in a very kind of factual way and you feel like sometimes, oh, I want to add a little more clarification, but maybe also the attorney can kind of talk about that. What can we change in the minutes and what is really changing the minutes? So can we, does everybody agree? We can kind of release, let's get some clarity first on when the presiding officer or the mayor, or whatever we're going to call it, can make a motion or not make a motion.
My discussion now on that topic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got three topics.
Okay. I agree, there are some, some places in here where it should say presiding officer instead of mayor. The reason for that is in your absence, there would be someone else, and so we'd want to have a general. So I think for the provisions that talk about the conduct of the meeting, I think we should say presiding officer. I think that makes sense.
Does anybody agree with that?
We will make that.
We have, okay, good.
Yes. What was the second one?
The second one is when the presiding officer can make a motion. Or because Rosenberg's rules say that unless the presiding officer believes, nobody else will. So, but we're pretty clear in here, although there's some places where it says the opposite.
Yeah, so that's up to you all. You could just default to Rosenberg's rules, which is what would happen if you took that section out of the protocols. It's common to have a restriction like that, given that the mayor's usually conducting the meeting and deciding sort of speakers and like. Part of that is about perceptions about fairness from other council members too. If the, the person controlling who can speak when is also making motions, it can, it can lead to perception of unfairness. So requiring it to come from someone other than the presiding officer is a common provision.
And just so, I'll give you my thoughts and then everyone else kind of think about that. And I'm absolutely fine with that, but it might also be the case, say if I kind of think, well, you know, here's maybe an idea, instead of making it into a motion, I could also say, you know, would any council member want to consider a motion XYZ? So that way, and would, I would, you know, just from my personal viewpoint, think, well, oh, maybe we haven't really thought about this. How do I get that out there? And so I wouldn't necessarily make the motion, but you know, make a suggestion and, you know, and yeah, so if somebody, but I don't think we have to write that in there necessarily because I don't think we'd probably have a, these aren't really strict prohibitions that the mayor or the presiding officer can never make a motion, but you know, maybe a suggestion to other council members. So how's everyone, what does everyone think about that? Pam, you want to say something?
Maybe Gary can answer. Your closer.
I absolutely agree that we need to standardize when the presiding officer can make a motion. And it seems like we should use the Rosenberg option, which is unless no one else brings it up, then the mayor can suggest or invite a motion, however you want to word it. But it just seems like that is what is normally done. And it just needs to be stated in each of the paragraphs where it refers to the mayor or the presiding officer may make a motion, because there is, there is a couple places where it's inconsistent in this document. So, yeah.
Or maybe we could also, I think, maybe have, when Rosenberg's Rules of Order is our general procedure that we follow, in addition to, so that way we could have the mayor should not make a motion, which I think is the normal way to go. And that's usually why I go with the junior council members, you know, to the more senior and then I kind of speak last. So would that make it simpler, Gary, if we just kind of refer to Rosenberg's as the overarching rule? And that way it's set in there, that way we don't have to add it to each paragraph? Is everybody fine with that?
Well, I, I do have a substantive point I want to make about this general issue that, about speaking. But I was going to say, I think in terms of the question of Rosenberg's versus what's in here, we have to make a decision as to which is, if there's a conflict, which is going to have priority, right? Obviously, if Rosenberg speaks to an issue that's not addressed here, we've said we follow Rosenberg's, that's pretty clear. But there could be, I think we have in some cases changed a little bit of Rosenberg's. So we have to make a decision as to which is going to govern, I guess, would be one thought I had. And then may I speak to my substantive point, which is sort of related to this? And you did touch upon it. And that's the order of speaking on page seven, where it talks about council members and every council member desiring to speak shall address the presiding officer and on recognition shall limit the comments under debate. And then once you've been recognized, you won't be interrupted. I would like to add something to this that says, the presiding officer shall, whenever possible, call upon council members in the order that they have requested recognition. Just to be sure that we have the concept, which I think is implicit, that if people want to speak, they get to speak in the order that they've requested recognition. So that would be, I think, a good place to add that. And otherwise, my personal feeling is I would agree with Pam on the general idea that if there is no motion, the mayor should be able to encourage a motion. So I think that's what Pam was saying.
Is there anything else on the side officer?
I know we've moved through past presiding officer, but I just, okay.
I do want to go back, because we kind of talked about the presiding officer.
So just to Councilmember Tripp's point, I think, you know, I would just like to hear a little more, because I know, quite frankly, that you would often like to speak first. But, you know, sometimes it's a matter of trying to balance, you know, making sure that everyone kind of has an opportunity and making sure that, I mean, is there, can you give me some, some specific reason why you really feel like, you know, you need to, because watching everybody, and I know we could have buttons, but you know, they go in order and one might be the and one might be lighter red and darker red and stuff, but, you know, just give me a little more specifics.
Well, the language that I offered says, "Whenever possible, shall call upon council members in the order that they have requested recognition," which clearly implies that the presiding officer is in charge, but sets out the principle. And I don't always need to speak first. I do feel like we're all adults, and I haven't noticed anybody here who won't raise their hand when they want to speak, or feels that they can't speak. But frequently, because your back is to me, and you turn to people who don't have anything to say, and query them, that just doesn't always make sense to me, because I think the people speaking to your sitting, that you're turning to, if they don't, if they had something to say, they would let you know, probably. So I just think that, I think it's actually implicit. I didn't go back to Rosenberg's, but I think it is implicit. And I'm not getting into the whole question of buttons and all that. I actually am a proponent of some regulated, not regulated, but systemic way of doing it, which is very, very common in many, many, many cities. But I do think the general principle that you should, whenever possible, try to recognize people in the order that they've asked to speak. And if the person's out of line, then the fellow council members will have to tell them to shut up or whatever.
Limit debate.
Uh, sorry?
It would be a motion to limit debate.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that I feel like it's important to recognize people who are ready to speak. And often, I am the junior member, and often, I don't have my thoughts together in the beginning, but then, when I hear other people's comments, then I get ready to speak. So I feel like it just makes more sense to recognize the people who have something to say right away, that begins the discussion and sort of primes the pump. So I feel like it would not be taking away anything from the junior member. It actually would help them, actually, I think, to not have to speak first, because you're not the most knowledgeable in the room about some things. So it makes, it reinforces that you don't know something. And I think I'd rather listen to the discussion and then contribute.
Just, I echo what council member Reeves says as a junior member also. And there are different topics where we all bring our different expertise, and sometimes we're hot out of the gate to ask a question for clarification, or to bring in value that we may be able to offer to a topic, and there's times when we aren't. And if there's one person with their hand up, by all means, I say, let them bring in their expertise or questioning.
So that is, everyone fine? If I feel like I want to make the first comment or ask the first question, so we don't really follow a procedure of, you know, being acquiesced, allowing more junior members. So if everyone's fine with that, I'm fine with that, too. So it might not be that, maybe you hear me with my, I don't need to put my hand up, I have that in my head, but I might be willing to speaker ask questions first. So if everyone's, so it's even all the way around, if everyone's fine with that, and then, if I really want to speak first, I'll probably do that. And then, but believe me, I can really see everybody, even though I'm turning to the left, I'm just looking, you know, to make sure I can, you know.
You're just ignoring me. No, I'm just kidding, Margie. You saw, I'm just kidding. You did see me, you're just ignoring me.
No, that's really not fair. That's not fair to say.
I didn't know you saw me. I didn't know you saw me.
Yes, I, yeah, no, I, and it's really, because that's really always been, the Rosenberg's procedures is to really go to the junior council members first, and then the seniors. So that's why I've always kind of practiced that.
And now you're going to Rosenberg?
Yes. But if we want to change that now, and I think that's what we're saying, that the mayor or any council member, you know, can speak in the order which they're acknowledged by the presiding officer. So I can definitely see everybody. You don't have to jump around, I, trust me, I get, I'm just, you know.
I was teasing you. I wasn't trying to offend you. I was just joking.
All right, so we've got that one clear. Okay, and so the, yes?
I was going to go back to the agenda piece, because I know there was questions about that.
Well, first, the third one that, before we go to a new list, so, and if the, let's also briefly discuss when, if, because I know it's kind of come up before, can we bring another, during public comment, bring another public member who made a comment back up for more clarification? And just my caveat, when we do that, then we, I think it's fair, we have to ask every public comment person if they would also like to make an additional comment. So just your thought about, you know, do we bring public comment people, speakers, back up? And how do we treat the rest of the public?
Perhaps when we bring, or if we decide that we are good with bringing people back up, we limit it to two minutes at that point, and rather than go to every other person and just say, is there anybody else that has something new to add to the conversation? I mean, I, so far, we haven't had that kind of audience where they continue to want to hound on a point, but if we preface it with two minutes and to add something new to the conversation.
Or clarify.
Or clarify, yeah.
So that may be the first instance where I see there's a value to limiting debate after, on the second time through, that we have a general rule that there's no limit, or there is, that the resident or commenter has a minimum that we don't limit, but then on their second round, it's less.
I'm, I'm not in favor of not having any time limit on their first speech opportunity. So I'm suggesting five minutes, and then, if they need to clarify, or they feel like the council has not heard them correctly, then they have an opportunity to clarify with a maximum of, I don't know, one or two minutes. But I think also, there is a section in there that talks about when someone is doing a, I don't know if it's specifically states land use presentation, where someone who's bringing a project to the council, yeah, the applicant, has a certain amount of time to speak, and then there's public comment, and then that person has a rebuttal amount of time, but the public commenters don't have that rebuttal time. So I like to look at that as a, something to reconsider, that there are some things that maybe in the rebuttal of the presenter that weren't addressed in the beginning with the comments. So how are people able to feel like their comment was valued or considered if they don't have a chance to also do a one or two-minute rebuttal as well? So.
What's interesting about that comment is, that's in the old protocols, but not in our current one. Our current one is definitely reduced, and it's, there's no description of that type of allowance for the applicant. So I don't know what that means if we don't have it in our document.
I do think it might be under the public hearing section of the current protocols, which is different than public comment. So those things are different. When you're holding a public hearing, and it's a, something that's affecting a permit or a license, or an application for an entitlement, you would give an applicant an additional time, and then also a chance for rebuttal as a matter of due process.
And it's on page 17 of the new, new draft.
And, you know, in that case, all you could, what you could also do, after the applicant speaks, and the opponent, and then a rebuttal, then you could call for public comment, because all that is, you know, you open the public hearing, and then you close the public hearing. So that way, once the public heard the debate by the applicant, and any, any opponents, and any rebuttal, then, and usually, you'll know that during, during a public hearing. LAFCO's probably the most complicated of all, so I've run a lot of those, but, and then ask for a public comment. And that, that really should kind of take care of the public having the ability, one time, to kind of come up and do that. Would that work?
So I just want to clarify, so you're talking about having the public hearing, you'd have the comment piece, and then the rebuttal. You close the public hearing and call for public comment?
No, no, no. Public comment, you have to have the public hearing open to call for public comment.
Okay. So are you suggesting the two?
When, wait, if, let's say we have a, a public hearing that is a contentious land use, and a landowner wants to, you know, build a roller coaster or something in town. And so then, you know, you'll also, with the applicant, sometimes there will be an opponent who will want to come up and address that. So that opponent, we have to kind of really discuss what that would really mean. Sometimes you won't have an official opponent, sometimes it will just be in public comment. So if you don't really have an opponent, then you really don't have to have a rebuttal. So that's when we could have call for public comment after those discussions occur. So that way, all that would be.
So they would have full, the public would have full information, and then?
Then they, then they can do that, so.
Does that address the concern over here?
In a, in a meeting where the roller coaster is, is the project, and there's no designated opponent, but there's lots of public comment. Okay, so they're probably against that in town. So once that roller coaster proponent gets to rebut the public comment, then you would again call for more public comment?
Well, I thought that's, is that, I'm assuming that's what the council is talking about here.
Yeah, that's, but it sounded like you were thinking there wouldn't be any public comment upfront. No?
Well, it really, if we're trying to be, run the meeting kind of efficient, and give everybody plenty of time, at what point, wouldn't it be better to have the, the public hear everything first, and then be able to address, instead of having the public comment, nobody knows what anybody's going to say, or what the applicant's going to say, then you're going to hear all this stuff, and perhaps a rebuttal, and then bring everybody up again? That's the part that just seems not as orderly as we could probably figure out how to make it.
Right. Well, I think one of the frustrations of being in the public is that the discussion or the presentation happens, and then a public comment is accepted, and then there's a, then sometimes the public meeting is closed, right?
A public hearing.
Public hearing is closed, and then the applicant gets a chance to rebut, and then council deliberates, and it's at that point where it feels like then additional public comment would be helpful for the people in the audience. I'm, I'm just suggesting that we could talk about that. I'm not saying that that's the way I think everybody thinks it should be.
Clarify the public hearing process for everybody.
Sure.
So the purpose of opening and closing the public hearing is so that during that period, you will receive evidence that you will consider in making your decision. So you don't want to close it before you've heard all of the evidence that you want to hear to make your decision, because once it's closed, you're not accepting any more evidence. So that's the effect of closing the public hearing. That can be public comment, that can be written information submitted to you all before the hearing or during the hearing. The effect of closing it is, we're no longer accepting new evidence to consider regarding this matter. So typically, you'd have a presentation from the applicant, questions that go back and forth, sort of back up even further, since we're, we're talking about the whole process. Typically, you'd have a presentation from staff first, and then you'd have an applicant presentation, and then you would have public comment. It is okay to have an additional public comment period in there, if you'd like, as long as the public hearing is still open during that time, because if you're going to consider what the public is saying, you want the hearing to be open. Does that answer the question?
We can raise another one.
Okay.
Thank you. I think the, the issue is just having us clarify the whole process about how we use the public comment period. And so on a quasi judicial, it just seems like you would, you, we would receive staff report, we'd get a presentation from the applicant, and then we're opening up public comment then, and leaving it open until we've heard again from the applicant and the public. But it seems like on the, but maybe that general rule is, we have this, we typically have this experience where we open public comment and close it when it comes, before it comes back to council. And maybe it's, this council might be interested in some other form where, not just on quasi judicial, but other issues, a resolution, you open public comment, you accept council's issue or comments, and then you, but you leave the public comment open, the public comment period open, and ask then for additional comments from the public and close it. So we're not opening and closing, opening and closing, but we have a general rule that we just leave it open for, to maximize public comment.
Well, I'm, I don't see any issue, as I understand what, what you're saying, is that the public, that the public hearing would not be closed until the public has been invited back to speak a second time? That's okay.
Right. We go back and forth sometimes, with opening, closing, opening and closing, and it's just sort of, maybe we should just leave it open.
Yeah, I definitely recommend, open once, close once.
May I ask for clarification of, we've got the staff that talks and opens the dialogue, the applicant presents, but be, I mean, where, council speaks in there twice, the initial discussion, and then we come back and talk again to make a decision. But I, I'd like to see where council is layered in that chain of dialogue.
Well, again, I mean, Gary can go into the quasi, the two types of public hearings, and when we can have any discussion, and when we can't, before we've heard all public comment.
Yeah, and it's, it's typically divided into council questions at the beginning, questions of staff, and then questions of the applicant. And that's about information gathering, because you're still taking evidence and you're thinking about it. And so you're asking questions to clarify the evidence, and to see if there's additional evidence that you'd like to consider. And then, once the public hearing is closed, then you're having a discussion and a debate amongst yourselves.
So it's staff, applicant, council questions, public comment?
Yeah, and sometimes, and sometimes council questions will come after the staff report and after the presentation as well. And then sometimes after public comment, there's additional council questions to staff to follow up on. So those questions sometimes come after each piece. But then, once the hearing is closed, then it's the discussion and comment period where you're debating.
Would it be helpful or possible to kind of outline the process?
Well, it's, but it's not hard in fact. You know, it's, it's a bit of a nuance, depending on the item and kind of where it goes. And again, this is, you know, really important for quasi judicial, because this is kind of where you get sued. If it's legislative, you know, like, you know, we're going to, you know, hand out free hot dogs or something, and we're going to make it a policy or something, then you can, you know, you don't have to follow that, that strict of an order. So kind of writing all that down is, it just isn't a perfect flow, per se, and it just kind of takes a little nuance and experience and feeling to see kind of how it goes. But, you know, bringing public back, you know, a second time, we can definitely do that, especially like, you know, if we have one minute or two to really add something, because at some point, you've got to limit the debate to, for the council to make a decision, because otherwise, every time somebody says something, then somebody else, well, can I get up again to address that? It really can go sideways quickly.
There's a general standard procedure for There's a general standard procedure for general business on page four.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I didn't lift my mic, I'm sorry. That's okay. I just wanted to say that it's possible that the first statement that was made by Robin is the correct way to handle it, which is just to add a piece of information that says, public comment, additional public comment will be accepted for a maximum of X minutes, and you insert that after the rebuttal. Additional comment may be accepted. How about that?
I like the "may," then we have the option, because as the mayor has said, it kind of depends on the circumstances.
I was just saying, on page four, there's a general standard procedure for conducting items.
Yeah, I think we just say, if you have the public hearing piece, let's look for it.
And then, the last one on correction of minutes. Can you just quickly clarify, Gary, if we send staff, you know, typos or whatever, we don't really have to pull the minutes or not, and then what constitutes a minor versus, you know, oh, I wanted to add this to that, so you didn't really say that.
Yeah, so this goes for any agenda item, too. And so we'll talk about the minutes specifically, but I think just noting this procedure generally for agenda items is probably useful, too. So when things appear on the agenda, you have an agenda title, and then you often, you always have documents that follow, and those documents are staff reports, and resolutions, and agreements, and whatever else is accompanying the agenda title. The agenda title itself cannot change after your agenda is posted, and it limits what you can talk about. And that's why sometimes you'll see me chime in and say, we're not in, within the bounds of this agenda title. But the agenda materials, the staff report, the agreements, the minutes, other things that are accompanying your agenda, can be changed, and sometimes are changed, by staff up to the time that you approve them at the council dais. And so sometimes staff will catch this, sometimes we'll catch it, and then I'll bring it up at the meeting, like the meeting yesterday. But revisions to these documents sometimes occur, and then will be placed up on your dais in a red line, and something, and an email was often sent at the same time to say, for agenda item blank, a change has been made. So that happens. It does not require that you pull it from consent, or that you take it off. You do need to note for the public, and I will always remind you, that there has been a change, the change is available for inspection, and is available to describe it beforehand. So that's true for the minutes, too. So if there are corrections to those, staff can do that, and then include them up there for you to adopt, and then the record will note that you're adopting revised minutes from what appears in the agenda packet. And that's okay to do it that way. If for some reason an item needs to be pulled, minutes or otherwise, it can be separately pulled and discussed from the consent calendar, where you can propose by motion to make amendments to it, just like any other item. So if there was some significant change, you certainly can use that procedure to do it, or staff can make the change and then bring the document to the meeting itself. Generally, minutes, from my perspective, we need to be, have a document that's part of the record that shows who was present, how they voted, and what they voted on. That's really what, legally what the minutes are for. And so sometimes you'll hear the term "action minutes," and a lot of jurisdictions use "action minutes," and it just has that. Who was there, who voted, what they voted on, and that's it. Because really, you just need it for proving later that something was properly approved or adopted by the council. Some minutes go into much more detail, and you'll have some jurisdictions that have really very lengthy detailed minutes. There's no requirement to do that. The action minutes are sufficient to show that you've attended and voted, and what you voted on.
Any questions on that?
Thank you, Gary. It just seems it's either in Rosenberg's or in this protocol, there was, I mean, it makes sense, action minutes make sense most of the time, but there's an opportunity for a council member to request that their statement be included in the record, like we hear at Congress. So that's either in Rosenberg's or this one, if someone felt there a need to record a specific statement, it's, there is the opportunity for that.
There is, yeah. The draft protocols that were sent, and that's common, a lot of jurisdictions have that. Some procedure for council members to add things to the official record or the minutes, so it's included in. And that would be for something that's not already in the agenda packet, and that a council member would like included.
Eric's question about completeness of the record and whatnot, that was one of the things I want maybe table it for another point of discussion. But just to have a really good system of keeping track of public comment, so that it can be available to others, because even I sometimes want to go back and look at a public comment, and it came in through email, they might have stood up and said it. These would be written public comments. Is there any way, or maybe I should ask a legal requirement, that written public comments be centrally available as part of the public record, so that people could go back and look and see what people said in writing? Because they come in for us in a variety of ways, and even I have trouble finding them sometimes. And it'd be nice for the public to read the written public comment.
Yeah, so this might be a question for the clerk. I think those written are included in the record in some way, but we can follow up with that if Hillary doesn't have a question, an answer to that immediately. The short answer to your question is, people have a right to speak at the meeting, they don't have a right to control your record, or what you make and what you include in the record or your minutes. That's up to you all, what's in the record and what your minutes say. But you could adopt something that says, written comments will be included in the minutes, or something alike. You certainly could, if that was the rule that you all wanted to use.
Or have them just?
Or have them available in some central location? Because clearly, if it came in writing, somebody could do one of the requests, you know, public records request, but that seems kind of silly. You know, we have all the archived information. It would be nice to have the public comment archived somewhere with the record of that meeting.
Sure.
That's just a thought, a written comment. It would surely be helpful for council members, because sometimes I have to go, try to go back and find a written public comment. And the public might find it helpful.
Generally speaking, public comment that's received prior to the publication of the agenda is included with the packet. Things that come in after that window are subsequently loaded up to the agenda and republished. That is the general guideline for how it's done.
So if you went to the agenda, you could find the public comment on past meetings?
For example, two comments were received after the cutoff for the agenda yesterday, and they will be posted and attached to yesterday's agenda, and then republished. If there are instances where that is not the case, please bring that to our attention, but that is our procedure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This brings up an interesting comment, that we have a long history on our website of the video recording of meetings, whereas some cities, when I was doing research for city managers, they don't do that, there's no record there. So there's that opportunity. I was kind of curious to see, is there a state law that if you video meetings, is there a number of years that they're required to be kept? Or is that just, I think we go back for a long time, which is great to be able to be able to see a history of an item.
Yeah, you keep them much longer than state law requires, and that's, you know, a good practice for the record, and also helpful for us staff members as well, who are going back and trying to figure out what happened, and to reconstruct things. So the Brown Act requires that you keep a recording of a meeting for 30 days. But your own policy, your own records retention policy provides that you keep it much longer. So you have a records retention policy for all types of records, and I think your recordings are permanent under the prior council direction.
So one last comment, and I'm going to figure out a way to wrap this up here, is the council, fine, since we've agreed, we're going to probably go with five minutes and two minutes for the public for a second comment, that we do not have a public comment sign-up sheet? Okay, no public comment sign-up sheet.
Yeah, my only discussion point on that is for SB 1439, which we talked about briefly before, one of the things you might consider is having some process for speakers to identify whether or not they have provided a campaign contribution of more than $250, because they might be prevented from, well, you all might have to recuse yourselves if they're the ones speaking or have an application. There's no requirement to do that. You all track that through your sheets of campaign contributions and the like, but many cities are considering some kind of sign-in sheet, or speaker card, or something to aid you in doing that. It doesn't have to be this, it can be something else, but something to consider.
I think that's important. I think we're going to have a sign-up sheet. Round, Reeves, please.
I think a sign-up sheet is helpful if, once we get into any, you know, controversial issues, land use and such, so we have some call of order. But I also feel that there are people that are intimidated, that are waiting to, it's like speaking at a funeral, there's things you want to say, but you're just scared to stand up, and, you know, I don't want to discourage. I guess as long as the sign-up sheet, they can quick go up and sign up during the course. That would, that would help.
I'm interested in the sign-up sheet, not specifically for the reason that the attorney has stated, but that I feel like it's a big effort for people to come out and make a public comment, and it's not in their normal routine. So I am of the opinion that when we receive a written public comment, and if we receive a public comment at the podium, that we should have their, at least their email address, so that we can send them a "thank you for your public comment" kind of email, because I think we don't acknowledge enough the participation we do get. And I absolutely don't understand why we don't say, "we received your public comment, thank you for that," when we receive an online comment or an email comment. So anyway, that, that's one thing, that reason why I think a sign-up would be great. But you could have it at the podium, so that when people actually make the decision to stand up, they're not doing it at the door, they're doing it in real time, so that if they decide to opt out, they, you know, don't have to leave a trail that they didn't do it, but that the sign-up sheet is at the podium.
Gary, can you just talk about if email's optional or part?
Or a card, that you pick up and give it to the clerk or something.
An email response to public comment?
No. Just if they're asking. We can definitely ask for their name, or optional is address, is email optional?
Yeah. All of it's optional, in fact, even names. So you can ask for all of that. If in the event you receive, have a public speaker that says, "I don't want to even identify myself," you should still allow them to speak.
That was what I wanted to clarify. The Brown Act says you can't make people give their name.
Correct.
I don't know about having it at the podium, because then, I mean, some people are a little more, it takes some time to get up there, to get organized, to get ready to talk, and then to think that they're going to write their name down and their stuff. So a card or something, or even here at the clerk desk, something that makes it efficient.
Well, let staff work that out, and come back to us. All right, so with that, we are over time. I just want to like, you know, you want to give some ideas about wrapping up, or what we need to do next step?
Yeah. Because we are, we are at time, want to acknowledge that, but I also want to acknowledge that we didn't talk through every piece of the protocols that you may have comments or questions on. So want to open it up for ideas on how we capture those, so we can make the next meeting efficient. Do we want to throw out sections now? Do you want to share those comments with staff? What are thoughts on how we capture other comments that we didn't have discussion about, so we make sure we have that discussion the next round, and have those comments captured?
That's around. Want to go first? No, I'm not ready to harness it all.
I think I'm okay with basically maybe make some notes, providing it to staff, and then they can send it to you.
Oh, sorry.
I think, yeah, making comments to staff would be appropriate. We just don't know whether the other council members are in agreement with that, so that would be your job to bring it back. But it feels like this is such a sort of bare bones thing, there's not that much more to discuss in depth. I think we went through several of the things that we were concerned about. The only thing that is really big for me is the idea of how we set agenda items.
And maybe that's one of the comments you can make, because that's identified in there, how the public does it, how the council members do it. I always, you know, we just do that, but maybe a little more specificity around that in your comments to kind of the staff. So I would like to, I have a feeling that we are really, the staff, think with, our next meeting is not until July for this, so if staff gets additional comments, I'm just wondering if we're going to need three meetings to get through this.
Well, my first question was going to be, do you want to extend the length of the next meeting? So right now, the July 19 meeting starts at 10, the same as this, it was 10 to 12. And based on this meeting, we were anticipating this question, if this meeting, if council feels like they want more time for the next meeting, do you want to, are you available at an earlier start time? Because I know the afternoon is booked for NVTA meeting, so if the group is available 8, 8:30, or 9, we could start the next session earlier, and then I'm, depending on how that one goes, with Brad here, we may or may not need the third meeting.
I can certainly do it earlier, but yeah, that's, I think that's generally the consensus, so let's change the invite and send it out.
8:30 to maximize the time, and I have to ask our ILG friends if they're available at that time.
Okay. That works, okay.
And in the interim, you will send comments, additional comments to staff?
Right.
So we can?
So to John? Are we sending comments to you, or?
John, Gary, staff.
Well, let's set kind of a time limit right now, so just so we can kind of keep moving. So this is the 21st, can everybody have them in a week from today? Okay, there you go.
And John and Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Just copy John and Gary, and not the rest of the council members, and there we go. So, but staff has kind of captured a little bit of the conversation today. We'll, yeah, so we'll rekindle clarify that, and go ahead.
One more question, and apology. I apologize for the confusion about the streaming of this meeting versus the not streaming of this meeting. It has been our practice to not stream the protocols or the goal-setting sessions, and I believe that's within the current protocols to have you not stream those. We inadvertently advertised this one as being streaming last Friday, so that's why we chose to stream it, and had the microphone situation that we had. So the question I think would be, and if it's okay to ask this question, do you want to stream or not stream the next version of this meeting?
I'm fine with not streaming. Microphones are hard to pass around, but if everyone.
I think that's added extra time.
Yeah, yeah, it really has. Okay, no streaming is fine. We'll just go with the minutes that we thoroughly debated.
And as a reminder, the meeting is open to the public, so the public, if there's public watching this, and they want to participate in the next one.
Because it was so exciting.
Please join us.
Definitely. All right, so with that, I am going to ask for a motion and a second. And in our current protocols, it says whoever makes the motion needs to identify the time, but we will be, so we're either going to change that and let me do it, or the first motioner in the future, because we're going to assume most of, that's probably going to stay, needs to identify the time of the adjournment, and then somebody needs to second that. But I will ask for that motion, so that we can adjourn to 3 o'clock on June 30, Town Council's special meeting to conduct applicant interviews for our commissions. So with that, do we have a motion?
It is 12:11, and I would like to make a motion. It is 12:11 and I would like to make a motion that we conclude this meeting.
A second? And do we need a motion to extend?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Okay. We adjourn. We just hold this on. All right. I'll wait for the reply. Please, we love these. Is that okay?